Brian Geezy. Cody Brabelski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Brian Mahan. And I am present.
All right, those that are willing and able, please stand to the front of the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we're going to go into our virtue card reading, I believe, as of here?
These two, yeah. Courage. Courage is bravery in the face of fear. You do the right thing, even when it is hard or scary. When you are courageous, you don't give up. You try new things. You admit mistakes. Courage is the strength in your heart. You are practicing courage when you stay strong, even when you are afraid, are willing to try new things, admit mistakes and learn from them, make amends when you do something wrong, do what is right for you, even when it is hard, ask for help when you need it. Affirmation. I have courage. I listen to my heart. I face my fears. And I'm willing to try new things. I have courage to do the right thing.
Thank you, Pat. Board of Education Guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views. Even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of all times, we will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders and monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, arts, and athletics. All right, we're going to go into the public comments now, public comments. During the public comment period of the agenda, the board welcomes comments from any district residents, not a member of the board on any item not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to state law, the board cannot engage in conversation with you, but may ask questions. The board may refer the item to staff, the standing committee, or a future agenda for discussion and action. Each person wishing to speak will have up to three minutes to speak. Speakers are asked to provide their name, address, and topic for discussion. So those online or here in person tonight, is there any public comments that want to be discussed or addressed? Looking online. Nothing on there, and then anybody? Is there anything in the comments online? If anyone wants to check just before I switch over to those in-house?
Nope, nothing in chat.
Okay. Then any public comments for those here in attendance right now? Danny?
I'll see if I'm here. I just was wondering about the grounds maintenance for next spring. I was told by a school board member that's not here tonight that this would be decided already last month.
Yeah, and we're still working on it.
Because I know there's a million things going on, but deciding which way you go, we can't wait until April when the grass is growing.
Right.
Ask someone like me or someone else, because I can't come up with that kind of equipment that soon. And for my, you know, for my plans, I really want to stay with the district, but I kind of need to know, you know? Do you know? Are they going to go with somebody?
No, we're still working on it, yeah.
What's the plan on when we'll know?
Why don't you give me a call and we'll talk more? It's not the agenda tonight, and I don't know that you want to have anything shared.
No, like I said, one of the school board members that was here tonight in person told me it would be by the middle of October, I would know something. So, and with the last past president, I've heard a lot of things have been told me that have not been true, and it's getting pretty aggravating to me, because this is something I want to be a part of. But it's just, you know, here we're creeping up on December. I talked to service mowers, and this is just a let's say we do go out for bed. I need to have the order for the mowers in by the end of January to have them for the mowers. That's the only way you can guarantee them. And I'm not saying I'm going to get it, but if that's the way it fell, I need to have the mowers ordered by the end of January. And that's really not that far. So, that's my concern. Any other reason I came tonight is because I was going to ask that person why we still don't know. He said for sure, well, no, something by that date. And we're exactly a month from what he told me. And I haven't heard nothing like yet, or, you know, he didn't call or nothing. That can be frustrating.
Well, thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
Pat, did you want to ask a question?
Well, no, not a question, but I think Brian was talking to me about that, Danny, and Brian's you know, Brian Geezy was talking to me about that, and I shared with him my thoughts, which I can't share now. But, you know, with him being sick.
Yeah, so we're a ways out.
We're, because of that.
A way zone?
Not a way zone. I don't think we're a way zone.
Honestly, if it can't be done by them, I can't, you know, I really can't help it. And I've been, I've worked for my club for seven years. I know everybody. I know what needs to be done. There's a lot of things that the school board don't realize, what I do that is not just mowing, you know? For example, we have a football game. I offered to go down and blow the field off last Friday. Somebody beat me to it for homecoming. I cleaned the bleachers. I went and got the bleach and cleaned the bleachers. Steve and I, he helped me once I got that. There's a lot of that stuff that we do that I don't charge the school for, because I know everybody here and we help each other out. But when I hear different stories and, you know, promising, oh, well, no, by the middle of October, well, you haven't even tried to call me and say something came up, you know? So it is frustrating, and I'm worried that it's going to drag out, because we do have COVID going on. You have a $2 million project. That's why I just, you know, this can't be put on the back burner until April, because if it does, I can't help you. You know, if it's to that point, I'm out of the picture. Which maybe, maybe I'm not in the picture anyways, and I just don't know it, because I just, I just hope that it's not forgotten. And it could be easily, no fault of your own, because you got a million things going on, and there's tons of stuff going on with everything. I understand, so I just want to hopefully keep it fresh in your minds that we can't put this on the back burner until April, because if it does, myself or any other grounds person, you know, any other company that would take care of something this substantial cannot do it in a week. I mean, you're going to have to hire, you know, it's just, it's not, I'm not just going and mowing the neighbor's lawn. I mean, this is 70 acres that we take care of and multiple things, not just mowing, you know? So, I guess that's it. I just want to make sure it stays fresh.
It's not forgotten, we're working on it.
Okay.
So, but thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Any other in-house comments before we get going? Okay. All right, we're going to jump into showcasing schools and student learning and looking for our CWSA update.
And Amy Fluno should be with us today.
Do we have Amy Fluno with us, Danny?
I don't see her. Is she there?
Do we have Amy Fluno online with us tonight?
I don't see her on here. So we can move right into the overarching results.
Okay. Update on Bridges for overarching results.
And John, Mr. Spray, would you introduce that topic?
Yeah, I can. Thanks for having me tonight. We have a couple of members from our Humke staff here to just to speak on the work that's being done around our math curriculum. And I'm just going to say again, our goal right now is just to really to give us an update on that and how Bridges has helped students become self-directed learners. And we have various teachers who are going to respond on that. But first, I'm going to turn over to Connie, who's our math coach, and it was really overseeing the implementation process with our math action team in our building. So I'm going to let Connie kind of start out from her perspective, things that she wants to highlight, and then teachers, go ahead and feel free to jump in. We have Mrs. Arceo here in addition, Mrs. Spray, Mrs. Engstrom, Mrs. Moore, and I think we might have, that might be everybody.
Okay.
So Connie?
Mrs. Gilley is also here.
Mrs. Gilley.
Oh, no, Sierra, no, oh, there she is. She's got the big A. Okay. All right, there she is. All right, thank you for answering Angie. Connie, you want to go ahead and just give us an overview real quick on what we're doing and the theory behind why we chose Bridges and are we moving in this direction?
Sure. So we, last year, we started with, Bridges is composed of two components. There's Number Corner, which is like what would have been considered a calendar program in the past. So that's one thing. We started that last year. So this is our second year on that portion of it, which is actually bringing up the background and creating, engaging the students in, and foreshadowing what's coming to them. So it's kind of like a review and a preview of what's headed to them. And this year, we started Bridges. And we chose Bridges because there were a few things going on with our math program. One of them would be that it didn't appear as if our students were very engaged. They, in fact, a lot of the kids in the building didn't really like math at all. And the teachers were looking for something that would be more exciting for the kids. And then the other thing that we noted was that we didn't get the results that we wanted as far as student data. The rigor of the program wasn't quite what we really truly needed. So that is, that is what we did, and that's why we switched. But we've been very, I've had the privilege this year, I guess, due to circumstances, to teach every grade level in our building math this year. And I'm very, it's been amazing to see what the kids can do. This, in fact, today, I actually had a kindergartner counting my threes to me. Now, that's not what I asked them to do, but that's what they did. And it was pretty incredible to see that they could skip count my threes, because that's not typically a skill that we see kindergartners do. And the first graders are writing equations on a regular basis, which is not something that usually, I mean, when I went to school, that was, you know, sixth, eighth grade, before we started writing equations. So they're really creating the kids to be more independent thinkers. But I'm going to warn you that it's often confused in a community because they're not teaching the kids algorithms. So they're not telling them to cross something out in barrow and just bring down. They're teaching them number sense and number quali- quali- uh, number quantity so that the kids truly understand what they're doing and can manipulate the numbers and understand that.
Thanks, Connie. Connie, I tell you what, we've got, again, Kristen and Erica and Ashley here right now, but you ladies want to speak to some of the experiences you've had around just, for example, you know, and Kristen, do you want to go first?
Sure. At the kindergarten level, I've seen, just in conversations with the students that we have on an everyday basis, we're causing them to think about what they're thinking and why. And they're having to explain their thought process, and by doing it, doing that, it's helping them to become deeper thinkers. Another part of the program are their workplaces, and this is where after we do the lesson in teach hall group, then the students go and have the opportunity to work independently or with a partner in what's called a workplace. And in that workplace setting, I'm able to observe children having conversations with one another where they're applying what they're learning, the vocabulary, the skills, and just talking with one another in conversations and using what they're learning in the different activities that are designed for them.
Thank you. Erica, you want to describe what you're seeing in first grade and how it's helping the kids become self-directed?
Sure. I think that one of the main things that we're seeing in first grade is just the complexity of their math thinking and then being able to explain mathematically what they, how they're solving problems, and then to describe to each other. So really using that vocabulary like Kristen was talking about to talk about how they are thinking as mathematicians, but also to really, you know, so that vocabulary is really being increased. But the complexity and how Bridges, one thing layers on top of another thing. So I know that in our past program, they would work on one math concept, but now they're working on more than one math concept at a time, and it's really layering the complexity within that concept. So it's not just adding or subtracting, but it's adding and subtracting integrated together, but then it's also them, you know, using decade numbers. You know, so it's really adding that rigor that helps them to create like really good mathematicians. And their ability to talk and converse with each other, and then that group work that kind of help them to engage each other. So I find that in first grade, the kids are very engaged in the learning, but it's because they're also engaging each other. So they're really self-directed and more independent too. And I think with everything that's happening this year, we're really trying to do, you know, a lot of things digitally. So we're doing digital workplaces so that they have access to those things at home, but that they've learned how to access those things within the classroom as well. And you would think, you know, putting a kid, a first grader on a device, but it's amazing how much they tuck and use that math thinking just to talk to themselves, playing those games. But then they're able to go home and share those, share those things with their families. And I've had a lot of families really talk about how they like the fact that we're sending those home, because it engages their families and the work that we're doing as mathematicians.
Thank you, Erica. Angie, second grade, anything that you want to add to that?
Yeah, I had the chance to use Bridges remotely when we were quarantined. And we actually were able to pair the lessons through CSAT and send them out to students. So it worked out really well for us to have just a math lesson that was taped. And then we did math groups through our remote schedule so that we were able to have that math discussion in the small groups. And the program landed really well to having that remote schedule for us to be able to have things to talk about and work through. And then, like Erica was saying, we had those workplaces that were sent out digitally too. So I really enjoy that Bridges has more of those electronic options compared to what Envision had for us in the past. It's been very helpful for us, especially this year, trying to figure out how to get things out in a different way.
Thanks, Angie. And Ashley, you get to wrap it up here.
Okay. Sounds good. I just, I really can't speak enough to the deep, rich level of conversation that my students are having and that really furthers their number sense. I just, I feel very strongly and confidently that this year, more so than others, when my kids are thinking about numbers, they have a much richer understanding of them, which lends itself to the talk, which is really amazing to be part of. I've had many, many, I should say, much fewer tiers involving math this year. Even though, in my opinion, we're doing much more complex things, they, they just, like Connie was saying, they're not just learning an algorithm to solve. They're learning, they're learning what works best for them to solve problems. And because of the number sense, they're able to figure things out without an algorithm, which is super neat. And I just, I love how we, we had Number Corner last year, and I loved Number Corner. And it's in tandem with Bridges, how it's cycling everything and reinforcing and introducing at the same time. So it's really neat to see these working together. Like, my kids like look forward to Number Corner every single day, and they're connecting things in math time to Number Corner. So it's super neat.
Thank you, Ashley. We'd be happy to take questions from anybody here as we bring those to a close.
Well, I can definitely tell by watching everyone's enthusiasm in all the videos of how much you've enjoyed working on the Bridges program. I wanted to thank all the teachers tonight for their work and what they're currently doing. And I enjoyed hearing about the increasing engagement, working on the board integrations, and then applying what they're learning, which is very awesome. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Cody.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, John.
Ben. Thank you, guys. Thanks for joining us tonight.
All right, Nathan Swanson, if he is here tonight, our student representative from the high school?
I did see, yeah, his name's on here. Yep. Yep, he's here.
All right, Nathan, if you're with us, feel free to give us some updates here going on around the high school and the district.
All right, so in a more broad term, we are done with quarter one, ended two weeks ago or so. I think it, for the most part, went well. We're having some troubles, I think, with the freshmen cohort learning, but I think everybody's improved and adapted to it. But more broad term, fall sports are for the most part concluded. Winter athletics are kicking off. And then on a student council basis, we are going to host a blood drive within, at the very least, the next 12 weeks. So early spring, probably March, April. And post that at the high school, it'll be open in the community. So any of you have the need to donate blood or want to, certainly show up to that and help us out. Additionally, Student Council is looking at setting up a committee with a group of students to explore second semester options and how that will look, whether it's cohorts or returning to a being period day. So we're exploring how second semester will look. And I think that's about it. Blood drive and looking at how second semester will look, so.
Do you know when the blood drive is yet, Nathan?
What was that?
Is there a date for the blood drive yet?
We do not know a date based on the community member who held us, or at least 12 weeks out, which would make contact with the Red Cross. We had originally planned for January, but then we learned it'll be 12 weeks out. So I would imagine sometime in early spring, probably March or April. And we don't pick the exact date. I believe we have to give the Red Cross a range of dates, and then they choose from those.
Awesome.
Early spring, we'll probably have advertising out. Within the next couple of weeks, we'll be no more details.
Awesome. Thank you for the updates on the cohort and winter sports. I do know signups are next week, and wrestling should be around the 23rd for signups. So make sure the student athletes that are watching are signing up for winter sports here. All right, thank you, Nathan. Now I'm going to head on over to Brian Grill, our Director of Student Services. Brian, if you're with us tonight, feel free to hop on in here.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just have a few updates for you this evening. So where I'd like to start, because as you know, as part of my roles and responsibilities, I am also one of the safety directors in the district. And I just wanted to update you on the work we're doing with the Wood County Health Department, because when we first set our criteria for risk levels in the district prior to school opening back in August, there were a lot of unknowns for us. So we created the numbers based on information we had from the county and things like that. But we've been working very closely with two members of the health department, Terry Lennon, Terry Lynn Denise and Jade, our two school nurses, and I sit on a weekly meeting with the county where we are currently working to rework some of that matrix to really look at the numbers within our school and how COVID is spreading within the school and how well are we doing in mitigating that spread. So right now, we have a draft new matrix that we have put together to really, like I said, hone in on what is the spread? What are the numbers within our school? Because when you look at county level, the numbers are, they're hot. We all know they're very hot. But we want to look at how are we doing within our school to determine what is the best approach for us as a school. So we are getting some numbers to our health department and things like that to start running a sample of this new matrix, what would it look like? But because we know more, we have to adjust and update what we're doing. Because like I said, back in August, we were creating the best with what we know. And now that we've known, we know more, we got to adjust. But right now, to give you a brief update to our numbers for student staff out due to quarantine or positive cases. At Humke, we're sitting at 42 staff and students out as of current. At AMS and CWSA, we're sitting at 105. And then at NHS and the academy, we're sitting at 86. So just to give you some totals and the work that we're continuing to do, because I know it's getting stressful for people as the numbers go up, but I want you guys to know the work that we're doing on a weekly basis to analyze and decide what the best approach is. There's a lot of work going into that. So do you have any initial thoughts or questions on that?
I'm just curious, I know you're talking a lot about the students and is there, can we send out a survey or something to see how the staff or the faculty is feeling? Something simple like we did at the beginning of the year, just to see how they're feeling too in regards to COVID and protocols and matrices going on? Is that, has there been any discussion or maybe just an idea of doing that? Anonymous, probably so. Just to get a gauge on how everyone's feeling. I know, like you said, it's taken a toll on a lot of people. So I just, just hoping, you know, we can kind of just gauge and see what's going on in their terms of their career too, so.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Any other things? Items?
Thank you.
Um, the other thing I just wanted to give you an update on, I want to just do a shout out, not just our special education staff, but all staff as they're hovering between virtual and in-person. The work the teachers on this screen and throughout the whole district have been amazing, because, you know, our special education teachers, I'll speak to briefly, they're, they're making sure that they're providing their services, whether students in quarantine or here. And I can speak, hopefully speak well for our general line of teachers too. They're trying to make sure the students that are home quarantined are getting the same experience as students in the classroom. So the balance and jumping back and forth has been nothing but amazing. And I can't thank teachers enough for all that they are doing to help make sure our students who are virtual or quarantined are getting quality education like our students in person. It's a lot. And like I said, special education, from my aspect, they have done a lot to update paperwork so that way virtual meds are written into IEPs. This staff has rewritten, done an interim IEP for every single IEP in this district. And that was a huge undertaking. I cannot thank the special education staff or Ann, who's our administrative assistant, is printing and mailing all of those IEPs out and being my second eye as we're checking dates. We couldn't do it without them. So I thank them, because there's been a lot of extra this year. So thank you, thank you. I cannot say that enough to our staff.
And I want to commend you and the staff that you're currently working with too. I know it's no easy task. Going off of what Brian's saying here, I just want to commend and thank all their staff in the district for all the work and everything that everyone's going through and working with right now. Thank you, guys.
But that's it for But that's it for me, so.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, we are going to jump on into Lynn Knight, our business manager. Got some updates for us on a financial plan?
I'd like to introduce Al Kreider and Heidi Hartman. They're going to give a compensation update on the new model. And I believe there are some committee members online as well.
Okay.
First of all, thank you for a couple of minutes to Justin and I. And if you'll remember that in July, you approved the new financial compensation package, professional development package. That was really quite different from anything that's going on currently. Wanted to come back and give you an update on how that's been received by staff and how staff is making plans for the future based on that. So we did do a survey about two weeks ago, and these are some summarized results of the survey. And as I often tell my kids in the classroom, you know, it's tough to find the one thing that would please everybody. So, you know, if I would have showed up with Ben and Jerry's cookie dough ice cream to hand out to you all tonight, Pat might have been sitting over there going, what? No men chip? You know, so it's tough to find something to please everybody. But I think when you see these survey results here, you'll find that we are really on a good path and a good positive one. So we sent out the survey through email. And I don't know what your email inboxes look like, but, you know, we, as teachers, we get inundated with emails. So this was a survey sent out through email anonymous. We don't know who responded, who filled it out and who didn't. So we couldn't go chasing down the people that didn't fill it out and get them to fill it out. So we did get 63 respondents out of a possible 94. So we had a two-thirds representation of the teaching staff responded to the questions. So here are some of the questions that we asked. One was just general overall satisfaction with the plan as was presented and approved. And the choices were either highly satisfied, satisfied, slightly dissatisfied, or dissatisfied. So 62% replied very satisfied, 35% satisfied. So you add those two together, we have 97% of the respondents said either satisfied or the majority of them very satisfied with the compensation model package as approved. One of the goals, or several of the goals of the compensation package was to give competitive wages, you know, in our area, to attract and retain staff and to provide opportunities and encourage professional development among our staff members, the teachers. And also allow individual opportunity to pursue professional development that would be most beneficial for them. So in the retaining staff area here, so one of the questions was, what are your career intentions? And we know that, you know, none of us have crystal balls. But as of the filling out of the survey, here's what the respondents said. There wasn't any one of the 63 that responded that is currently actively pursuing a position in another district. 10% said they're unsure of what their teaching future might be. 22% expect that they'll be in the Nacusa School District for five to 10 years. And 67% have no plans to leave the Nacusa School District. I would say that is a very positive result from what we were hoping to see. And you have to remember with some of that, after we built the survey and sent it out, we get the results back, you kind of go, oh, shoot, I wish we would have asked this little nuanced question and we didn't. So in here are included some people like me who, five years from now, probably won't be a teacher in the district anymore. But that's not accounted for in any of these questions, you know. So there could be people that are looking at retiring and they could be one of those people that says, well, I may not be here five years from now. So we don't know that. But that was a very encouraging response to what intentions are for the future. Regarding the continuing education and the professional development units, now that is what was set up in the compensation model for encouraging people to pursue their own development and having a monetary connection to their professional growth. So here is the results. Now, the first one there, and I was the one that put this question into the survey and I kind of had to chuckle when I wrote it. And it has a little bit of, I don't want to say snarky, but a little bit of humor to that one because this has been a crazy year, in case you haven't known. So 26 of the respondents said, you know what? This year has been too crazy for me to even think about pursuing professional development. And that's just kind of the hard, honest truth. There's a lot of things just to survive daily, a lot of new responsibilities that a year ago we didn't have. And so doing extra things now is more of a challenge than it will be when things settle down a little bit and we have a little more normalcy. 10 are currently in the process of earning units. 10 are interested but need ideas. And Heidi and I and the members of the committee have talked, and we really do see that that's a responsibility we need to take on, working with the principals. And Heidi was just saying that she had talked with Nathan today and he's ready to sit down with the middle school staff and brainstorm some ideas of how staff can pursue some development models that will gain them some units. Seven have ideas but haven't submitted anything yet. And seven said at this stage of my career, they are of no financial benefit. So, and that is maybe a little hitch in the model. Those like me that are at the top of the salary schedule, the professional development units don't benefit us financially. Now, that's not to say that people like me aren't going to pursue them, but there isn't a connection to that. So that's something to perhaps consider for the future. As far as the continuing education goes, under the master's degree category, honestly, I was kind of surprised at this number that 32 of the 94 in our district, 32 people currently hold a master's degree. That's a, you know, that's a third. And 17 are considering or expecting to pursue a master's degree in one to five years. So that comprises 47 people. So half of the professional staff either have or are intending to pursue master's degrees. Now, one of the real uniquenesses and flexibilities that the plan has proposed was national board certification. And recognizing that as an equivalency of a master's degree and allowing what in large part is a new generation of teachers, that that is really what they're interested in, allowing them to pursue that and compensating that in correlation, same as a master's degree. One person said they've started that program. They're in the process of national board certification. Three intend to pursue it in one to two years. 14 intend to pursue it in the next five years and one is unsure. So those were the questions that were asked. And to summarize the questions, as often is the case with surveys that are conducted, there's an opportunity just to provide comments at the end of it, you know, tell us something we didn't ask or, or, you know, give us something to think about or respond to, whatever. So these comments here, while I know you can all read effectively, I think there's something beneficial to hearing them spoken aloud too. So better get my glasses on for this one. Somebody thought it was smart to put these in 10-point font so they could all fit on one page. That would have been me. Now, as I'm breathing hard, I'll breathe through foggy glasses to try to read them too. But here were some of the comments. Thanks, thank you, thankful 13 times. That was recorded on the survey. Expand the five-year teaching credit in other districts to help recruit teachers from other districts. Now, that is in reference to, we will give up, the plan will give five years' credit to anybody coming in on the salary matrix. As a new staff member, it's very encouraging to see the care and concern for staff members that is shown through the new compensation model. The model is an exceptional tool for motivating professional development. I'm thankful for the increase in salary. I'm very pleased. Seeing the value and investing in our teachers is appreciated more than you know. I am happy we move forward with the new compensation package model. This quality wage makes my choice to remain in Nacusa my best option. I am so appreciative. Thank you for making financial concerns a lesser worry for me, especially this year. I am still new and have no input at this time. I am too new to formulate an opinion at this time. Appreciate that it was approved. I want to be reassured the plan is going to be followed. This has helped me, helped keep me in the district. Provides fair opportunities for salary increases by individual professional development. Nacusa is now more in line with other districts. Thank you for listening to the staff. I never expected to see something like this in my tenure in the Nacusa School District. I appreciate your work and commitment to supporting a path to salary increases. I now feel valued. I now can justify the cost of pursuing a master's degree and additional certification. This will allow our district to recruit and keep educators who take professional development seriously and wish to become better teachers. Thank you for openly communicating with the teachers of this district. It is a show of appreciation. Thank you for making this package work. I have no concerns. Thanks. Thank you for allowing opportunities to grow professionally. It makes me hopeful and thankful. So that was encouraging for us as teachers and a compensation committee to read. And I hope as you hear and see how the staff has reacted to this, I hope you will look back and go, yep, that was an effective thing. Glad we did that. There's still work to do. There always is. We need to keep this thing rolling. We need teacher leadership. We need your support as always. But that's what I had to say, I guess. Heidi, anything you'd want to add?
I think we covered it all. I'm just excited to maybe be helping move forward in the professional, the area of professional development and helping to drive that into the future.
Heidi, could you just, I know I stopped in your room one day and you had mentioned that you had jumped in. So could you just give one example to the board about Schoology, how you view that as a learning opportunity?
Oh, yeah. We've all had to learn Schoology this year in the midst of everything else we're learning. And I decided to write that as a professional development credit and jump out in front of everybody and try to learn as much as I could and implement as much as I can with the kids. And I tell the kids very often, I'm practicing so that, with you guys, so that I can help other teachers. And I've been able to sit down and help implement some things with other teachers and teams and just kind of trying a whole bunch of things. And I got 15 units of PD, or one unit of PD in at 15 hours very quickly. Realized that there was a whole bunch more to learn than I was learning and ended up writing up another credit for that. So, but my goal is with that is to, I would kind of have written up some quick, quick fine documents to help, to help out and how we could just get some, the kids on Schoology as fast as possible and doing things as much as possible, so helping it out for teachers.
And if the board or anyone listening online doesn't know, Schoology is our platform for pushing out online education and learning. And it's, we just, today in the middle school, we had a practice today, kind of a dry run, where we, as best we could, we told the kids, pretend that you're at home, that I'm not here. We set up and reported online learning and links and all of those things. And the kids just went about their business as if we weren't there. And I can tell you it was odd as a teacher, being in my classroom and telling the kids to pretend I wasn't there. And they did that very effectively. I'm not sure if that was encouraging or not. But with that, I would say that Heidi had worked up that PD unit for people to pursue. But I was new at learning Schoology and she had prepared a document that was very helpful to me and our other six grade teachers as a result of planning that unit. I benefited from that even though I'm not pursuing the unit. Any other questions from anyone?
I really liked the comment, I now feel valued. This is something that we want all the teachers and staff to feel. So we really want to keep that rolling over way past 2020. And you guys were the pioneers for getting this started. So thank you guys again for your previous and current work.
Thank you for talking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
All right, we're going to go back to Lynn here for the financial planning as presented.
So I'm going to pass it over to Terry for OE6. And he's going to talk about that first question.
Yeah. So OE6, thank you, guys. Have a good night. So OE6 is financial planning. Annually, the board will review the multi-year financial plan that is related directly to the board's results, priorities, and operational expectation goals that avoids long-term fiscal jeopardy to the district. A district's self-evaluation will be completed to include a table that outlines the current initiatives as well as documentation to support elements of policy OE6 financial planning. So this document as outlined really starts with, at the bottom, our results policies. And then, so all of our results policies drive our strategic plan. And then the district's strategic plan has driven, for example, in this particular case, what Lynn and I highlighted were the new positions that, so we've got our social worker, we've got additional tech ed teacher, we've got interventionist instructional coaches. And then also as a part of that, the tech ed, the tech ed upgrades as far as equipment, right? And then recruiting and retaining outstanding district staff, so as we just heard from the compensation committee. So the ultimate goal that, and Lynn kind of planted this seed several years back, is that we want everything we do and all of our financial resources to be targeted at getting those results that the board has outlined in the results policies. So Lynn?
The rest of this, of this policy is basically just part of the budget process and how I build my budget, which is done on an annual basis. We also utilize ForecastBuy, which is a forecasting model. I just had the opportunity to upload the fiscal year 2020-21's budget. I'm waiting for the results back now so then I can start building the budget for '21, '22, '23, and '24. Now, the budget for '21-22 is going to be a little bit questionable due to the biennial budget. So we do have some recommendations from ForecastBuy that we will be implementing in the plan. And those are based on a committee that ForecastBuy creates from business managers across the state. And they talk about what our assumptions should look like. So when we look at the forecast and we use the assumptions, we're using the assumptions that other districts are using too. So it's comparing apples to apples now, which is really a nice way to do things. So the rest of this policy does talk about just the basic procedures that I follow in regards to building the budget. I've also provided the school board's budget summary and the school board's budget activity. So that's for your viewing. If you wanted ever to see what was in the school, our school board's budget, I mean, it's there for you to look at. If you have any questions, you can certainly ask me. I would be happy to answer them.
Does our, the referendums we received, does that affect the forecast at all?
The only way it affects the forecast is the operating side. So we add the $2 million every single year. And since we've spent it on the positions that we promised and the tech ed equipment, I kind of built that in there. So it's kind of a wash now.
Okay. Thank you. We have any other questions for Lynn? All right. I am going to look for a motion then to approve the financial planning as presented. We'll be six. We have one and two. All in favor, please say aye. Motion approved. All right. So we're going to head into OE7 here, Financial Administration.
Terry, would you put the policy statement?
I'd be happy to.
That's a well job. Good job.
Well, thank you. OE7, Financial Administration. Annually, the board shall assure that the district administrator has not caused or allowed any financial activity or condition that materially deviates from the budget adopted by the board, caused or allowed any fiscal condition that is inconsistent with achieving the board's results or meeting any operational expectation goals, or place the long-term financial health of the district in jeopardy. A district's self-evaluation will be completed to include a table that outlines the current initiatives as well as documentation to support elements of policy OE7 Financial Administration.
So most of these are like assure that the payroll and legitimate debts of the district are promptly paid when due. I can tell you, if somebody gets paid, you're going to know. So we make sure we're pretty accurate in that. Also assure, assure that all purchases are based upon the comparative prices of items of similar value, including consideration of both cost and long-term quality. You've heard from the teachers how they have just bought into this school district. I mean, they, they want what's best for our school district as well. So they're going to be doing a lot of comparative costs. And Becky, our accounts payable person, who has been out on leave for a while, so I've been taking over the purchasing side. It's amazing how our staff gets the best deal they possibly can. I'm just, I'm just floored by them. Because if they can avoid shipping, they'll avoid shipping. You know, that's, they go right down to the 10 bucks. You know, that's, they go right down to the 10 bucks. So I'm, I'm just really proud of them and, and how they really show that they care so much about our district. So, and that's just a little way that I see. So the competitive bidding procedure, now that is basically required by federal law. Coordinate and cooperate with board's appointed financial auditor. We work with CLA, which is Clifton, Larson, Allen, and this is the second year of our third-year contract. Next year will be our third year, and then we'll discuss if we want to go up for bid or not. So the one I really wanted to talk about was make all reasonable efforts to collect any funds due the district from any source. Now, we did talk about how the, the school nutrition fund by law either had to have a positive balance at the end of the year or it had to have a zero balance. It can never, ever be in the red. And we talked about our uncollected accounts and how the philosophy of the board is we will never turn a child away that needs a meal, which I wholly agree with. What does cause that though is because we have Tabor, they are, they're trying to make a profit and we're in this situation where we're not going to turn away kids. So we get into the situation where we have uncollected accounts now. So we charge the, we charge the families and they can't pay because of circumstances that is out of their control. So we have these uncollected accounts that the general fund basically has to pay for them. We still have them over here and we're going to start collecting them, we send them to collections, we get as much as we can, but we still, every single year, have to make Fund 50 whole. That's the law. So we did that last year and so our, our, our uncollected accounts have gone down pretty considerably. So we transferred $35,591 from Fund 10 to Fund 50, our school nutrition fund, to cover those uncollected accounts. But Diana does a great job on, you know, sending the, the, the folks into collections that have to be sent in, and we do everything we can before we send them to collections because we don't like doing that either. But we do have to show fiscal responsibility. So we, we're doing much better in this area. There's still room for improvement, obviously, but I do have a comfort level with the complying with the federal law and with the auditors. The auditor basically sat down with me this past summer and we talked in depth about what we, what we were going to do, and he completely agreed with it. If we didn't do this, we would have received a finding. So it's, it's a kind of a lose-lose situation really, so.
And I kind of want to say that, that in a way it's kind of a positive, $35,000 small price to pay to make sure that no, no child or child here is leaving here, however you're coming here, however you're sold.
You are so right.
I think that's a positive.
You are so right.
That's a win.
Yes.
That's a win.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So thank you for the update there. Do we have any other questions for Lynn on OE seven?
Didn't you guys, didn't you guys do a thing where you, where you sought out donations from...
I'm going to have Diana talk about that because that was her baby.
You know, where you, how'd that work?
Well, we got quite a few donations and we're matching payments. So when someone makes a payment, we'll take the same amount.
Okay, so if somebody made a payment, you, okay, kind of like, oh, I, I, that's a good way to go about it. Good thinking, girl.
All right, well, thank you Lynn and Diana for your efforts. I'm just looking for a motion for OE seven then, financial administration.
Don't move.
Second. We've got a first and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. We're going to hand over to OE eight now, asset protection. I will, I'll read this one here. Annually, the board shall assure that the district administrator has not caused or allowed any financial activity or condition that materially deviates from the budget adopted by the board, caused or allowed any fiscal condition that is inconsistent with achieving the board's results or meeting any operational expectation goals, or place the long-term financial health of the district in jeopardy. A district's self-evaluation will be completed to include a table that outlines the current initiatives as well as documentation to support elements of policy OE seven, financial administration. Just a few examples here. Maintain property and casualty insurance coverage on district property with limits equal to 100% of replacement value. Ensure that all personnel who have access to material amounts of district and school funds are covered under the district general liability and credit policy. And then I have one more, protect intellectual property information files, records, and fix assets from loss or significant damage. And then we have the district administrator may not allow facilities and equipment to be subjected to improper use or insufficient maintenance, recklessly expose the district, the board, or step to legal liability, invest funds in investments that are not secured or that are not authorized by law, purchase or sell real estate, including land and buildings, and lastly here, take any reckless action that damages the district's public image or accountability. Do we have any board members' comments on OE eight for asset protection?
Can I just highlight one thing?
Sure.
So our mod rate for this year came in at .7, and the industry average is 1, and that actually affects our workman's compensation premium. If it's below 1, we get a deep discount. When it's below .5, it's even a deeper discount. We're, we're now at .7. We haven't been there since before 2011.
Wow.
Yay!
Yeah.
I was very happy about that. And we saved over, in our premiums of over $31,000.
Wow, that big of a difference.
It's huge. So...
Case for those lunches.
Yeah.
There you go.
Awesome, well, thank you all, everyone here for those efforts. I am going to look for a motion then for OE eight, asset protection.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried for OE eight, asset protection. We have one more here, GP seven, agenda planning. So this one's pretty simple, policy statement. To accomplish its stated goals, the board will adopt and follow an annual calendar of agenda items, which includes monitoring, review, and refinement of policies, linkages, and board performance in addition to evaluation of the district administrator. I can speak on that. I know we meet sometimes more than two, three times a month to go over policies and to go over documentation and things going on in the district, so I definitely will, we're taking care of that policy statement. Any other board members want to attribute to that? Terry, got any comments on GP seven?
I'm good. The calendar's there. This is, I mean, I love this calendar because it keeps our work in progress.
We just know what we got to do. I mean, yes, there have been times where we have put, have to put something off until the next month, especially when we were doing all the referendum stuff for a while there and, you know, and then some months would get pretty long.
It's very efficient, I must say that.
But that's just the way it worked out, and I'm okay with that.
Right on. All right, I'm just going to look for a motion here for GP seven, agenda planning.
Don't move.
All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried for GP seven, agenda planning. We're going to go into just some other board work here, the compensation committee, which we already discussed. Thank you again to those that came into the board meeting today to discuss that. And then set the agenda, reservation. We have the JV baseball coach, Adam Beerin. Pat, did you want to read the donations for me?
Sure. We've got $1,000 from Incital Wireless for the pond observation deck on the Humke Hill Nature Trail, backpack for kids. We have $100 from David and Carol Sonnenberg, $100 from Roll Makers, Sacred Heart Collections, $20 Anonymous, $25 Diane Greener, $500 Richard Bennett.
Awesome. Thank you to all of those donors this month. Minutes, 10:22 to 20, we have the regular board meeting, the treasurer's report, and the check register. And then I'm going to call for a motion here to approve the consent agenda as presented. Just a moment for a motion.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Motion carried there. Future agenda items, December 10th is our 2020 board workshop. We're going to go over R2, academic performance, and then we're going to revisit OE 12 in that board shop as well. December 15th will be our regular school board meeting. I believe that'll be, we'll be able to on Zoom as well, right Terry? Okay. We're going to cover the 2021, 22 school calendar. We're going to review emergency action drills, approve, approve annually that we do there. And then I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn. Before I do that, I just want to, again, thank everyone for their input, comments, and work done this month. And then I just hope that everyone stays healthy and safe. Right now, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for reviewing and stopping in tonight.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Jesse.
Why was that? I don't know what I was going to add.
Jesse, do we have it started twice? Is that what the problem was?
Uh, yeah, I think that's what happened. I think we had started, it was trying to get in without the login, and then...